This fight after our meeting today. Please all have your cell phones turned off, silent. And as you do it, join me with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in I'm going to ask Kathy today to do a roll call. Kathy?
Any gentleman?
Here.
Jay Solinger?
Here.
Kathy Dye?
Here.
Gordie Boppoint?
Here.
Doug White is excused on vacation and so is Paul Scott. He's in Florida, one's in Oklahoma. So they're not here with us today. Thank you. And Connie's not here, she's in Florida. Is there any other public comment in this panel? Yes?
Hi Brian, 4890 Bridge Cross Road.
Brian, if you want to move that hour up because it's kind of close, I know. I'd be more comfortable with you.
I just want to make a quick comment about the decision made at the last meeting to hire an accounting resource. And that was that the appearance and visibility of the present situation further underscores the need for a licensed CPA in the tenth accounting position. Financial advice purchased by our township should be in writing and it should come from someone with a professional license in the state of Michigan. Anything less is too informal and not of good value at an hourly rate for the citizens of Akron. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, we'll just leave that right here with Kate and Kathy. If you don't mind, anybody else?
Jay, I have a comment that I'd like to address.
Okay.
Since I've been appointed clerk of Acme Township, I've conducted my duties in office in a professional, responsible, and courteous manner. I have also been extremely responsive to township residents' needs. I have attended two four-day MTA conferences, received clerk's accreditation from the state of Michigan, attended ten monthly county-wide clerks' meetings, and have built networking relationships with other area clerks, including Grand Travers County Clerk Bonnie Shealy. Bookkeeper Drennan was brought in to reconcile at least ten months in the township's books that hadn't been touched prior to my appointment. Drennan's services benefited the supervisors, treasurer, and clerk's office. He was not brought in to only teach government bookkeeping to the new clerk. There have been problems with the township books dating back at least a decade. To hang any responsibility for those problems on Drennan or myself is simply not understanding the facts. I also feel I must address the comments made by the treasurer, Collette, to the Record Eagle. With regard to my actions being possibly illegal, I have done absolutely nothing illegal in my duties as Acme Township clerk. To make such comments without documentation is irresponsible and ridiculous. I believe the treasurer made these comments maliciously in my absence in a public forum to purposely damage my reputation. Her comments are completely personally revolting and professionally inexcusable. I'd like to express my disappointment at the removal of Dennis Drennan at the special meeting during my vacation on March 21st. I expressed my reasons for retaining his services to the board members, even suggested that they should be tabled until my return. The board elected to placate the treasurer and Drennan was removed. Considering the treasurer's resignation and the fact that her position needs to be filled, I will request that the vote be rescinded and Drennan reinstated. I also ask that I be given time at the April 8th township board meeting for further comment on the clerk's office and activities.
Put a copy of that for our record also. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Paul, Paul Run Dog, 3733 Moncrief Hill Road. You know, I have been at two or three meetings, my wife attends a couple, and I understand what you're saying, but I just drove past the sign to see if it said Jay and Sharma on the place of Acme Township, and it doesn't yet, so we're not quite to where Jay wants to go yet. Okay, and as far as Dennis is concerned, you know, you've got a deputy clerk, or a deputy clerk, you've got a clerk. How many people do you need for one job? Why don't you get a deputy clerk that understands accounting?
Thank you, Paul.
I think that's one of your big problems with this township right now, is the deputy clerk you have, you have. And I will, you know, and I understand that Jay's wife, but I think that's one of your big, big problems. I don't think the woman can get it wrong with anybody.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, look for approval of agenda.
Want you to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Any inquiry to conflicts of interest from anybody today? Hearing none? New business. Our first item of business today is to discuss hiring an auditor to look into any improprieties or legal activities when they are received. As Acme Township, the Record Eagle on March, this is right here, can I say it, 21st had an article about improprieties in Acme Township. Recorded by the Record Eagle. Many statements were made. We have not been provided as of today, nor yesterday, from anybody, any of those listed improprieties. We as a township are concerned, if there are any, we'd love to look into them. We're here today, part of it, to discuss about hiring somebody if that's needed. And our attorney has not, we talked to the lawyer of our township treasurer today, and the state, and so far, nobody has provided any documentation to us. Record Eagle said, I believe in the paper, that that would be provided when the letter of resignation was provided. We have been provided a letter of resignation by the treasurer. There is nothing attached to it whatsoever with any acquisitions. But we as a board feel that we want the public to know, we want to know if there's something. It is your money that we manage and maintain, it is your township we manage and maintain. It is not ours, so it doesn't say Jay and Sharma at all. It is the township residence, and that's what we're here about today. So that's the first item I'd like to discuss. And I'm going to throw out to the board, we had asked to look at auditors for the next audit cycle, and we did send a letter out, and we got responses from three companies, Abraham &amp; McGathney, Tobin &amp; Company, and Garbridge. Those were the three that responded to our bid letter. The range of prices from the three is around $9,900 up to $16,900. So that's, when you look at auditing of township books and records standard, that's the range we got back then. Today before us is, do we want to take a position of one of these would be hired if we have something to give them, work to give them to look into?
Okay, let me clarify that. So you contacted these three companies to find out if we needed to look into it?
No.
Just audit.
Audit.
So we're just talking audit?
Yes, do.
Just making sure.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
Okay.
Year end.
Year end audit.
Okay, and I know Cathy, and I know Tobin. The other company, do they?
Garbridge.
Yeah, do they all do?
All do.
Township audits.
Township audits, all have a recommended list of who they do.
No, 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 it's just one I didn't recognize. I know the other two.
Peninsula uses the first.
Sure, sure, okay.
Is this recovered at the next, the board meeting next week? I mean, talk about two subjects here.
Yeah.
Let's just, you brought the subject of auditors, which I raised the issue we should look at.
Right.
So we have three responses, three quotes.
Right.
Is that on the agenda for next?
Though it wasn't. The only reason we brought it in today, we put it together to be discussed. No, I think it is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda. Today, all I'm proposing, we've got those answers, if we want to select one, we don't have to select it today, I won't, bring it to you to think about. We could select one of those as somebody, if we get some acquisitions given to us. We haven't got any there.
Let me just make a point, again on the topic of auditors, which is separate from the subject here. For the board meeting, I glanced through the packet of their resumes of the three companies with their references that we could get a chance to look at before the meeting?
We just got them open today, just filed in today.
Okay, okay.
Yes, that's why I was just giving the range, Gordy.
And we were talking, so these are the three companies you're recommending we look at?
They're the three that we got bids.
That if something does come, we're ready to go, saying, okay, you talk to their attorney or their accountant, or, so we're talking the same lingo. And then they would be independent of who we would hire, I believe, so it wouldn't, it almost would be better, because it would be a stepping back, right? To say, okay, I mean, if something comes out, I don't know how much time we're giving for this information to come back. So if there's illegal, you know, how much time do we have to have on the gun?
We don't know. We don't know. But we felt it's important, we have a discussion, to make sure if something does, that we're prepared to respond to.
Sure, and I agree that we need to have a chain of reaction, so call comes, this is what we've got, okay, audit firm, go, come, look, figure it out, and then go from there.
And if the board's decision today is not to pick one today, which I respect why it might not be, as you asked, Gordy, you haven't seen the data on them.
Correct.
That's fine, can be then discussed next week. I just want to make sure everybody's aware we have them, but we are concerned, as a board, to the public, it's important that the public knows we are, we are not sitting back.
Okay. Just to, okay, so next Tuesday, just to end this, next Tuesday we'll discuss the auditors, just, that was brought up months and months and months ago.
Right.
Stance alone, that decision based on price references, et cetera.
Right.
Let's put that to bed. Okay, the other issue is going forward with having, like you said, allegations made, serious allegations.
Very serious.
That the board has not taken, the officials, quote, "officials have ignored concerns of financial irregularities, propriety, and possibly illegal activities," quote unquote. I think the board should take that very serious, especially from, if it was somebody from the public, we should take it serious, but the fact that the treasurer?
Well, I actually let you complete, I'm sorry.
If the treasurer who has access to all this has made these accusations, I mean, that raises it to another level. I guess we have two choices. One is we can sit and wait to see if there's any information, or any facts, or any detail forthcoming, and simply let this hang out there. Or the other alternative is you engage somebody totally independent from the board, Plant Moran or some, somebody to contact the treasurer and inquire as to, do you have any information that they, as an independently, should look at? We shouldn't be looking at it. And of the two choices, I don't like this hanging over our head. Something maybe forthcoming, something may not. The people are continuing to read in the paper, these given accusations from, again, from somebody who was inside looking at the books. So I would rather be proactive and contact somebody who would be interested, it might be somebody completely different, would be interested in the audit, but would like to, through our attorney, to their attorney, however this works, make contact with the treasurer and find out, request some documentation on what these allegations are, because I sat through, I think, all the board meetings, and I went back and listened to the transcripts, the tape, and boy, it went over my head that these concerns were voiced by the treasurer and he just sat there and ignored them. I take that very seriously, so.
I would comment to you, if you don't mind, to what you're saying.
I'm kind of finished on that.
No, that's very important. Couple things we've done. The data's came out in the paper, our attorney, Mr. Jox, and I, they, he contacted our treasurer's lawyer and said, do you have data to provide to us? None has been provided. We contacted him again this week, I think Kate was, dated before yesterday, again, nothing's been provided, nothing's been given. We've also contacted with our lawyer, Mr. Jox, the state Department of Treasurer, which is the newspaper allocates, alleges, that's where this is going to go to, they've not provided anything back to us. So we actually have made those contacts more than once documented by our lawyer, on purpose. It's important, we want to know. But if you read the paper article, Connie has never, our treasurer, the paper alleges a lot, I have their article, anybody ever want, didn't see it, you can see it. The paper alleges a lot, but there's nothing from Connie in any document we've received or been given, saying what the paper alleges. So we have a resume, it's not there, paper says it, it's attached, it's not there. Her lawyer has not provided it to us. So I don't know whether the paper's mistaken, I don't know, but.
On a resignation, she had made mention that she would put those, and we received her resignation, and there's nothing on the resignation.
No, on the, the paper alleges that says it would be there.
Right.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
But you're right, the paper says that, but in fact, we have a resignation, it does not have anything attached to it. So we just want that to be known. So we made those, those attempts, Gordy, at least three times.
Well, then let's get back to this, because I think that's what we've got to deal with. And I don't know if there's something we can do proactively to say, Plant Moran, look.
Eight.
I'm just saying their name, because he had mentioned it, so that's the only reason, and we even use them back when we did the farmland. So they're somewhat familiar with our books, but they don't do our audit.
Right.
You know, so that's the only reason I use that name. And so I just think, we have a lot here going on in Acme, and I don't want, one, the public to lose faith in the board and the action. I don't want the grants that we've applied for to lose faith in us being able to manage that money, like, oh, well, I can't give them there, look at what's going on here. And so, you know, we've got some, two good projects, in my opinion, that are out there that we have a good chance of getting, and we could lose it because of bad press, because it's all, unfortunately, what the world is. So I think if we can do something that's a little more aggressive in saying, we're holding a unified front here, we're going to look into this, we haven't had anything, Gordy, it sounds like, has done a good job of looking back, I don't remember anything. The one issue that has wrecked my brain, okay, because I'm sitting here thinking too, was when you came to the board in March, it was clarified, when you were taking, you researched it. No, I know, that's what I'm saying. That was dealt with. So that's the only thing, that's what I'm saying, it's alleged that we are not dealing with it. That was the only thing I could think of, that you then did some research, two townships did it differently, MTA recommended you not to do it that way, but that's it, and it's been dealt with.
Right.
This is alleged that we did not correct it. So that's where, that's alleging we didn't fix it, so, you know, that's where I would prefer.
Okay, now I know where, now I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, and you had directed at the March meeting.
I did, I did.
We need to remember that the, when the audit was approved, our treasurer was the one that made the motion to approve the audit that we have today.
Sure, and I don't think there's any issue with the audit.
I just, I'm just making a statement, that was, so that was approved.
We don't know for sure what it is, so.
No, 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 I understand it, so that's why I'm saying.
But the paper has alleged those comments.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that's, that's what's proposed today. Kate, is there anything you want to add to that from your knowledge?
Excuse me, for those who don't know me, I'm Kate Redmond, I work with Jeff Jox, he couldn't be here today, so I'm standing in for him, I work with him at Olson &amp; Stockton Howard. I mean, just as kind of a note, you know, any records that the treasurer might have, they are the township's records, and her resignation is effective April 8th, and at that point, you know, really, she doesn't even, there's no authority for her to continue to retain those records, they would go to the new treasurer, the town, you know, and they're really the township's records, so I think, just, you know, keep that in mind, that they really should, and if she has any additional communications or records, it all should be given to the township.
And it's, her resignation is effective the day we accept it, not the day it's provided.
Yes, yes, yes.
So make sure that's. So I think, the question is, do we want to pick a firm, do we have the thought of a firm to be prepared, or do we want to wait till Tuesday?
I would, just so we're further removed, I would have the law firm, I mean, we make recognition of them, that they make contact with, let them even pick the auditor, whoever the firm may be, so we're not even implicated, and we went after somebody that.
That we know or didn't know.
We just have them contact somebody to make a formal contact, and I think it's of value to have, somebody could speak at Connie's level of detail on accounting functions. If I were to talk to her, or any of us were to talk to her, and they start talking about pools, this and this, that, we would, you know, destroy our source. I'd like somebody who is skilled, who would have a understanding of what these implications, these accusations possibly are, to contact them, very formally, in writing, request a meeting with her and her attorney if necessary, just so we can, that the board is anxious to look into these allegations. That would be, if that's, so, I would like to make a motion in that regard at some point in this discussion, to see where we go with it.
Can we put a deadline, like they have a certain amount of time to get, because if we can, so when we send a letter, can we say, we expect a response within 30 days, or the information to be provided? Because if it's here, she's got it, there should be no reason that it can't be handed over, and I understand what you're saying on the April 8th. It's all public information anyway.
All the day, all the way.
I mean, everything we have here, there's a handful of things that aren't public information, and so, it's open to anybody. And so if we could put a timeline, that's reasonable, I mean, I, you know, I know there's travels and all that stuff, but 30 days, I mean, quicker, better, but I don't know if we can do that and still be considered reasonable.
I agree, you said, the date, and so we can then respond, so we've requested, we've waited 30 days, we've gotten a response. If I were sitting over there, and there's been allegations, accusations that possibly money has moved here or there, or whatever, I would be concerned. Maybe that's one of the statements in the Record Eagle, of concern of taxpayers' money, so.
Right. That's a question here, if you don't mind it.
If I may, it just, it kind of seems to me, though, that you're kind of putting the horse before the cart, in respect, in respect of hiring an accounting firm to look into whatever allegations they are, where actually, our township attorney should probably produce a demand for these allegations, okay? And let her produce the allegations first, in writing, what exactly they are, and then at that point, you would hire a firm to independently investigate it. But at this point, you know, you need to, you need to place some demand on the person who made the accusation, to produce.
Which we have.
Some guidance, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, but, there has been a demand for the information.
Because it seems, seems to be silly to hire an auditor without them.
I think the idea is that we, you know, that the township's prepared to move as quickly as possible when information's provided, and I, you know, if at some point, if the information just is not provided, not provided, the township does have subpoena power, and in theory, you could protect subpoena the record, you know, make it illegally by a court request to produce them, but hopefully it'll be resolved before that.
May I?
Oh, Mr. Solinger?
Yeah.
My name is Margaret Tipsward, and I am the Director of Client Services for Rain Mid. We are a CPA, financial advisory, and we also have a corporate investigative services division headed up by FBI agents. We're a regional firm, similar to Plant Moran, we have board of people located in Traverse City, right above Espresso Bay in the Old Milligan Building. We do several townships in the area, I don't have those with me, but we've recently done work for the city of Cadillac, Wexford County. I am here as a resource for you, I have information on our corporate investigative services and our auditing. Connie had contacted us at one time to see if we were interested in doing the audit, and we had never heard from her. That's been our only contact with her. But I think what we have is a unique combination of folks who can look at things from both perspectives, not only the accounting assurance auditing side, but any type of fraud investigation side. So with your permission, I would like to leave you our information.
We appreciate that.
Here's a totally objective resource for you.
Thank you. And yeah, when you're done tonight today, we'll leave it up to either Kathy or Kate, then we'll have it, so.
All right, thanks.
We appreciate that. Where do you start to say something?
I, the comment you made about putting the cart before the horse, there's some validity to that, I guess, the thing is, I'd like to, I'd like to bring it to a conclusion. I just look for some way to stop it from just hanging over our heads. And if, if the attorneys could make a demand, I don't know if you could make a demand, a demand can be made, I guess we kind of asked, I don't know if that's.
I would say a demand, yeah.
Asked, demanded, and did you have a date? Were you asked to have this provided by a certain date?
I don't know if Jeff gave her a specific date, but I think it was certainly as soon as possible.
Three attempts, though, plus, plus the state.
Yes, they're certainly aware that we want the information as soon as possible.
Well, maybe a rephrase of that is, maybe clear to everybody, the public and ourselves, we've asked, we haven't shied away from receiving this, and we've said that upon receiving it, you know, there's going to be some, if anything's right, it will be in accounting terms, and statutory terms, et cetera, et cetera. Upon receiving it, the board will appoint an independent audit firm, accounting firm, whatever, to work in conjunction with the attorneys to determine if there's any basis to any of these accusations. Well, I think we need, I guess we need to come up with a statement. You've said there's been conversations, I'm not aware of what's going on in detail, that's fine, you can determine, but I think we need to come up with a definitive statement that we're not shying away from this, and we're anxious to receive information, and once it's received, at township expense, we will have an independent audit firm review any of this, to see if in fact, any of these allegations are true. If we want to put it a two-step to avoid the additional cost of having a, now an audit firm contact or receiving that matter would be, would be fine.
I have a couple of comments, and then I'll come back. I think, I think what you're asking would be a motion to try and take that direction?
Well, yeah.
Then we take an action.
Yeah, I'm just saying, bringing it down to a two-step, and saying that might be a better way to do it.
Right, because if we send it to the attorneys to write a letter, obviously, if there's nothing presented, we're not going to be perfect, right? Do it all as soon as the same.
There's a point you can't go in.
That's what I'm saying.
And if she decides you want to subpoena for something.
Sure, but then.
Because there's no penalty, the township itself can, you know, she doesn't, if the deadline isn't met.
Right, 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 right. And so then we would have to decide at that point if we want to go further and push harder and say, okay, we want to know specifically why these were made, and what are these items, okay, so that's the other. But let's say nothing's given, the attorney does this, we have deadline, nothing comes forward.
I think we asked our lawyer to come back to us with that fact, and at that point in time, we had to make a determination, how do we want to proceed, and ask the lawyer, our counsel, to provide some options to proceed with.
And maybe when our audit is looked at then in July, when we go through the audit process again, to maybe, unfortunately, not get our audit cost down this year, but have them look a little more in detail, because they don't do that necessarily.
But you have to know what the detail is.
No, I understand.
Right, I know what to ask them about today.
Yeah, 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 but even then, I mean, I just, I don't, you know.
Yeah, well, it's a fair thing.
If we don't have anything, I don't know how we can proceed.
Yeah.
Without them doing a full investigative audit, into every.
Right, there, there's a lot to look at.
Right, oh yeah, what to count, for starters.
Where?
Well, and you had, you had a minute, because I want to make sure I acknowledge it.
Yeah, from the Record Eagle article, I understand that the treasurer had made contact with the state of Michigan, and I don't know what investigative body is there, and what actions they will take, but I think in a lot of people's minds, we would expect the state to do something here, and until the state has spoken on this matter, and I don't know how that even works, how long it takes, that's really going to be one of the definitive measures here. I don't know if they're going to come in and do their own sort of audit. I think at this point, hiring an outside firm to do ad hoc investigative work will be incredibly expensive on an hourly rate, very lucrative.
Oh, sure, 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 absolutely.
So I don't want to go a lot of money down that hole, until we really think we're going to get some result there, and I understand that our RFP for auditing services certainly did not cover this type of.
Had nothing to do with it.
And we might want to try and do a quick supplemental on that, because that could be significantly more expensive than a traditional audit.
Well, we have, and our council has contacted the state treasurer's office to see if they've received anything, and as of. received anything, and as of, again, the day before yesterday, they've received nothing. That was their response. So, you know, we're trying to go up every avenue we can, because it's in the paper, something, something's there, so we, at least from what the paper says, maybe there isn't, maybe there is, I don't know. But yeah, we're not sitting back saying, don't, you know, we'll just wait and see what happens. No, we, we'd like to know. So, comment Chuck, and then there's one back here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just a little concerned that this thing might drag out, and with the allegations that she's making, would injure our grant process, and what is happening for the benefit of all the residents of Acme Township. Is she damaging the township reputation by saying what she's saying, or allegedly saying, can we go after with our attorneys and say, hey, this woman is damaging the whole township by the words and prints that are coming out from her, and say, cease and desist?
I comment on it this way, the only thing I can tell is what the Record Eagle says. I've received nothing from our treasurer that's going to resign in writing on anything. So all I can read is what all of you can read in the paper, doesn't say to me, they're alleging something, but I have not got anything received, and we've asked for that from, from our treasurer. So I just want, that's very important, because it's not, we don't think the treasurer's saying anything in writing.
How about the freedom of information to the Record Eagle? Are they saying something that they don't-
Could be.
-let loose of?
That could be, that could be a path we need to go down. Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Randy Camps. I live at 4716 Bartlett Road. A couple, one ad hoc comment, just for humor, to lighten the mood. Most of us feel that everything in the Record Eagle we read is true.
That is a light spot.
Okay, two things come to mind, and both things relate to what both of these gentlemen said. One, I, I would be shocked if there wasn't some protocol at the state of Michigan that is already in place for dealing with allegations of this nature, or any nature of this sort. And if the township office could contact the state of Michigan and request that protocol, that would be a guideline to follow, so that we're not reinventing the wheel. I'm sure this isn't the first time something like this has occurred in the state of Michigan. Number two, I would think that there has to be some sort of statute of limitations of this, and knowing what that statute of limitations is would be helpful in the sunset, or, or coming to the sunset of this issue. I, I do not believe that, and I believe we shouldn't go and hire someone to do an ad hoc investigation, something that we have no knowledge of. So until something substantive is brought forward, there's no sense in engaging someone. However, I do believe it is good practice to be prepared to engage someone almost instantaneously if and when those allegations come to light, so that you're prepared to move that call immediately. And so, there should be an RFP for this type of thing, without a certain amount of time, bring it back. I would imagine that if, if allegations are confirmed, then by that time, an independent auditor in place to react and investigate and use their findings. So, I do believe, as it relates to the issue of slander, that this is a public body, and unfortunately, anything that occurs within the public sector is free game. I could be corrected on that, but you know, this is a public, everything that goes on is public, so anybody can say anything they want to say, I think, within a certain, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Phillips, 2986 Weld, Juniper. I appreciate, first of all, the board getting together and having this meeting. To be honest with you, when I first heard about it, I was a little suspicious. Here we got this hurry-up meeting, and we have a vacancy, the treasurer's quitting, I mean, okay, we got a little backdoor move going on here. And I started to get a little squirrely about it, and I said, well, let me just go to the meeting, and I was glad to be able to attend. So I thank the board for having this meeting, allowing this opportunity for transparency, and allowing so much discussion with the members of the public who did come in today. That's new, and normally would be allowed in a board meeting, and I appreciate that. I think Gordy made a good point in terms of, we need to have something from the former treasurer, the current treasurer, regarding her allegations that, that we can address. And you've alluded to and held up the newspaper article, and perhaps it's a time for you specifically, as the township supervisor, to use the media to your benefit. And in an opportunity to show the people of Acme Township that you too are out for the truth, is to write a letter to the newspaper, outlining the efforts you've made to get any and all transgressions that may have been done by any members of this community, in this, in this board, and that you have been met with absolutely nothing, and basically telling her that you will act upon, and telling the public, you will act upon anything that's received from you, but you cannot act upon that which you do not receive. And maybe the newspaper is an opportunity for us to flush that right out, and show all the other members, I think we have, what, 4,000 people in Acme Township, thereabouts, who did not attend this meeting, who do read the paper, and find some things in there in addition to the weather that are true. And, you know, here, the township supervisors say, we welcome this opportunity for anything former treasurer you have to present to us, so we can investigate it, and hire an independent firm to look at the allegations, and as others have said, put this behind us and move forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comment, and I'll bring it back to the board.
Jim Maitland. 4303 Maitland Drive. Just a couple of questions. Who did the audit last time?
Dennis and Gar.
Dennis and Gar.
So they didn't even bid? I mean, is the bidding, is, is it closed for taking bids for the next one?
No, we, we've had contact with them already, we-
That's unusual, that they wouldn't redid to do it.
They did.
Well, we, we do have a price from them prior to actually going out to others, yes.
And is a bid, is, is it closed now? Did you have a deadline?
We have not, we, we had a deadline on receiving information back, but not our deadline on when we're going to pick yet.
Oh, okay, so it's still open, because there's a lot of firms around. I would recognize the name that you have, so, thanks.
Okay, no problem. Gordy?
The comment about responding, I think we're all trying to say the same thing, the same, serious accusations were made, and I don't think we can just leave it hanging. What's the best approach? I think your response of the supervisor crafting a letter, and sending to the Record Eagle, hopefully, I don't, or even add, the essence of saying we take this very serious, we will respond, we are waiting, we've made several requests, and as soon as we get them, we're prepared to engage an independent auditor that we selected by our law firm, so there's total transparency, to get to the bottom of this and resolve any of these issues. I think it's a great idea, it's probably the least expensive way to proceed, and just go forward. The concern I have is what somebody alluded to, is you all here have heard our comments, and I think, you know, our desire to get to the bottom of this issue. But there's several, I don't know, thousands, I read the paper, and, well, not only in Acme, but the entire region, who, they, all they know is what they, the two or three articles you've seen in the paper. And if they don't hear anything to counter that, that's the gospel, for those who still do trust in Record Eagle. So I think, taking that approach of getting a response out to those readers of the paper who aren't here today, and don't read the minutes of these meetings, or whatever, I think is, is an inexpensive approach, of just detailing what we've done so far, and what our intent is, to go forward. So I think that's-
I think I'd like to leave both. I'd like to go forward with our attorney, do a more aggressive letter, give him a date, saying we've made three approaches, or made contact three times, we've contacted the state of Michigan, we can't find anything, can you please provide us with information within a certain amount of time? A letter can be given to the Record Eagle, hopefully they'll take some of that information, hopefully call, you know, put some of that in. And then, so I think a combination, potentially, and if we can't, and hopefully we'll progress some of the people that aren't here, yet still get to the bottom of, if there is anything, what is it? You know, so, I mean, I don't know what your guys' thought is on that one, is to do a combination of the two.
Well, I think you have to.
I do, I, I agree.
I think a motion would be appropriate for that, just, but I think that's, the only way you can do, we've got to go forward with what we're all-
Can you phrase that in a motion?
Huh?
A motion to go forward-
With continual contact by our, by our counsel.
With a date certain, which we're requesting information.
And just to, and perhaps, and if that date comes, that at that point, the township will consider alternative legal actions, such as use of subpoena power, necessarily to document information.
That's fair.
Motion to go forward with, with continued counsel, date requesting information-
And to take possible subpoena-
Possible. At that point, the township will consider alternative legal action.
Alternative, legal action, just alternative legal action.
Alternative.
And at the same time, that we will craft a letter to the, to the Record Eagle, with the board's position on this. It's important we communicate.
Great, great. With the boards.
And if I could also interject, we probably need a response to some of the excellent comments that the public has made, but determining what the state of Michigan's investigative process would be when they receive allegations, I think it's hard to know at this point, because we don't know exactly what the nature of the allegations are, and whether it's civil or criminal, or, you know, just what kind of penalties we're talking about. But getting that information so that we can find out if it's duplicative of what, and independent, you know, find out how much money the township did save by letting the state proceed with it, versus how much there is in need for an independent auditor.
So we, but we can check on that.
Yeah.
Through counsel.
Yes.
That'd be, I think, appropriate way, then we, then we're not checking, it's-
Sure.
Independently look back. The questions you're asking are appropriate, and what is, we have a state that has 6,500 townships, so it's no doubt in my mind, with 6,500 townships, there's a lot of procedures down at the Lansing big house there, that tells us, here's what we do when certain things happen under, under rules. I'm sure it's there, I'm sure it's there.
And I don't know if the township also wanted to investigate, whether it's us or Jay, for quotes, or RFDs, similar to what Raymond's offering, for-
Let's say, just be prepared, give some thought, so we can quickly, if need be, have somebody in mind that you folks, people feel comfortable with. I don't even want us to pick who would, yeah.
I think, I mean, I would not, you know, not to push back at all, but I think it's important for the board to have different options, and, you know, make them feel comfortable with what the options are, and the board would have to authorize any expenditure of money. And I think at this point, it's, it's waiting to see what the allegations are, but just having those quotes ready to the board would be necessary.
Okay, thank you, Kate. You got that okay?
I think so. Are we going to go ahead and make that motion?
I, I think that's what Gordy-
Why don't you make the motion, because you-
Reader, word.
Okay, I'll tell you what I have, and then we can fine tune it a little bit, all right? Well, I have a motion to go forward with continued counsel, date requesting information, and take possible alternative legal action. Does that sound right?
If you have our recent information by that date.
If information hasn't been received by the date we-
Info not received by date. Okay. So, do you want me to, I'll go ahead and make that motion?
Yeah, make that motion, I'll second it.
Okay, make that motion. Do you want me to say it again?
No.
Okay.
Second it.
Motion's been made, it's been seconded. Any other comments?
Are we talking about them, if there is something given to them, that they're then moving forward? Do we need to have that in that motion, too, or no?
No, I think that's enough for, to get us-
Okay, get us going, okay.
And then you can have Jeff's training, but, you know, to really, really act your actions.
Okay.
Any other motion on the floor, any other question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing. Thank you. Pass. Go ahead, Gordy.
We had a discussion of putting together a statement from the supervisor, that he's given the Record Eagle, choose to print it, find if not, encourage them to print it, and you draft one out, like you discussed, kind of regardless.
Well, we, I think, yes, independent of this.
Yes, independent of that.
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion, the supervisor draft an official response from the township board to the allegations made by the treasurer, stating that we take this very seriously, and it's our intent to determine any facts that are based upon these allegations, and we will forward.
I'd like to modify that, if you don't mind, ask to. I think, I think what we're going to draft something up on is based on what this article says.
The responses to that.
To this article, what it's saying, not what anybody else is saying. This is quoting somebody else, but we haven't got anything from anybody else.
Isn't that-
The Record Eagle is the-
Right, that's what I'm saying, responding to those accusations.
By the Record, that the Record Eagle is, has printed.
And it put quotes around it.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I just want to make you know, because all I know, have in my-
It's not the Record Eagle that is making those accusations.
They printed it.
That's what they, well, I, I understand what you're saying, that's a-
Well, there's a big difference. If they came up and said, we broke the law, then I'll go back at them like I did once before, and get it retrashed. They were wise this time to put quotes around it. So it's responding to the quotes made in the Record Eagle, attributed to the treasurer. So it's not Record Eagle.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, and I don't want it to look like a-
I have not received anything otherwise.
I don't want it to look like a fight either. I just want to make it clear. I just want to, I want to put it on, and I want to move on, and be done. And if there's a problem, fix it, move on.
And let's find out.
So I don't want it to get into a-
So Gordy made a motion, we have a second to that?
Second.
Any other questions on that issue? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing. Thank you. Okay, that's our first item in new business. Thank you for being patient with us, we're all trying to understand this. The second item we want to discuss today is procedures to follow when we start looking for a township treasurer, or any township elected official. We have received a letter of resignation by treasurer Colette. It basically says, I resign my position, effective April 8th. That will be acted upon at our board meeting on the 8th. We can accept it, we cannot accept it, for whatever reason. But we want to talk today about the procedures we follow when any elected official has resigned.
Hey, Jay?
Yes.
Can I just make one comment here, because I don't know if it's a conflict, okay? Just trying to make it open here, backdoor and anything. I don't know how many people know this, but I was actually looking at running for the treasurer's position, and at the time, I chose not to, because of the previous person running, I was not going to run, okay? So then I went to the trustee's position, saying, okay, I might do treasurer at some point, but I was going to sit on the board, kind of see what, what it was, if I could, you know, handle the board part right, and it actually has worked out okay. I may, depending on your process, and I say may, put in to do it, I'm not saying 100% yet. I don't know how many other people, the, the benefit that I see for me, is one, I just want to move on. I don't want to go through the process of having to go through what we did to get a clerk. I feel like we've just gotten our feet back on us, and I feel like we're going, now we've got to take a bunch of steps back again, where I feel like I'm up on all the board topics. Obviously, I know the treasurer's side in the sense of tax collection, so I don't want to mislead either. I'm not a finance, I mean, I have some business background, but I'm not a finance person. But I know how to do the treasurer's side of things, due to what my job is. So that's where I don't know- So that's where I don't know, you know, when you said the conflict, I was not sure if I should say, so that's where I just want to be real transparent on that side. Obviously, and I'm not looking forward to having to run, didn't really know if I'd like that process in the whole scheme of the world, but I just want to put it out there. So I may not talk too much during this process.
I got a question.
Sure.
I assume the treasurer's still the treasurer and doing the treasurer's functions, right?
Up until the point we, we accept a resignation.
Until the board.
Is the deputy who's authorized to do everything that the treasurer can do, with the exception of voting on the board, is the, is the deputy going to, if there's a gap from April 8th or the date is, until we appoint, swear on the new treasurer, is the current deputy going to, what's her status, I guess?
She's on, actually on.
Yeah, let's talk about that in this process.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me answer a little bit of that in a while.
Okay, that's a question.
That's a very good question. A deputy for, whether it's the supervisor, the clerk of the treasurer, serves at the pleasure of the person that hired them, supervisor, clerk, or treasurer, they do not serve at the board's discretion. So when the supervisor, the new one's reelected in normal elections, whether the treasurer resigns, whether the clerk, you know, had, which we experienced last time, that, that function is basically over, that job's over to that person. So they no longer, so as of the 8th, if we accept the resignation of a treasurer, which is what we're talking about, so keep it at that, that deputy no longer has a function to serve in the township as a deputy in that office. This has been looked at more than once, been interpreted more than once, different ways, but that's basically the law, the rule, the law, the way the law's interpreted, I think that's fair case, you know what I'm saying?
Right, I think the statute isn't completely clear, but that's sort of a common reading.
Pretty common reading, right. So that, that's one answer to that, that as the 8th, the thing that's really, that we are looking at is as of the day we accept a resignation, both those functions are gone, we no longer can process a check or pay a payroll.
Well, let me ask a question. When the clerk resigned back a year ago or so, the deputy stayed on and did whatever those statutory requirements are that the deputy does.
We hired her.
Huh?
We hired her back as a board member.
As a deputy?
We did, Jeff had, no, as a hire, but Jeff had made the interpretation, that's where he's saying the general practice is that, and I can remember Connie actually brought this up, she says, we shouldn't have accepted that resignation until we had the new deputy in mind, or the new clerk in mind, because then the deputy could have continued the functions of the clerk. So in that case, we should have accepted, or should not have accepted Christine's resignation at that point, to allow the deputy to continue those duties.
Okay, does the deputy, okay, if we then, one option then, is we don't accept the resignation on the 8th, do we have a feeling that the deputy wants to continue beyond?
We have no knowledge or have no discussion at this point. The only thing we know, that the deputy has come in and asked for payroll information so she can file for a workman's compensation.
That's kind of an indication, if she doesn't plan to stick it out.
I think that was a discussion with the clerk, I did not have that discussion, but I think that's my stating that there.
Well, actually, I got an email correspondence from Connie to requesting a earnings report for Karen.
Okay.
Okay, so if the treasurer and deputy both are gone on the 8th, which is a possibility.
Possibility.
Can we continue to write checks and pay, I mean, stat, from a statutory standpoint? Are you sure from a statutory standpoint?
It's the treasurer's authority.
Is what?
The treasurer's authority to do checks and.
But the deputy can also sign the check.
Sure, but if she's gone, Gordy asked.
Right.
If they're both, if they're both gone.
We are shut down financially. We can process checks and put them in the bank, we can't cash checks, we can't write checks.
I, I personally think you're incorrect on that statement, because if the two of them got hit in an automobile accident or killed, that shuts down our township, I don't buy that. The state of Michigan will have some remedy for that, and I think that we ought to check on that. You just can't shut a township down.
The, the board has authority to appoint or, I mean, you know, if they both were tragically killed in a car accident together, the board would just immediately appoint some.
Yeah, yeah, we do have that right, yes. But we have checked that check, more than once, because it's a little concerning to me that you have employees that work for you, and in jobs, you know, we have people in that, we can't write a check, it takes two signatures, and without the second signature, the check's not a valid check.
And it has to be the treasurer's second, excuse me, the treasurer's signature on the second signature?
The person that's put in that position.
Can't be the clerk and the deputy, has to be.
Oh, the clerk and the supervisor, I mean, can I just ask?
No, I have no, in that case, I have no, I'm not bonded to write checks, to sign checks, nor have I ever.
No, the treasurer is elected and then has certain duties under statute as an elected official, but the treasurer is the one who has the authority to do those things, so.
Okay, it's, it's a serious issue.
So this is, I have a question about on the 8th. If bills are approved on the 8th, and they're printed out on the 9th, they're not getting signed.
If we accept.
Because I need two signatures.
If we accept.
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to be clear.
That's a fair statement you're making, yeah. We've had a lot of discussion about this, because we ourselves are kind of, you know, what is.
Let me jump to another question, now that we know the, still pausing on how we do with the clerk thing, but anyway, that's history.
We've got to go with more rag.
Maybe we didn't do it right, anyway. I guess the question is, in hiring, just to make sure we're right on this, treasurer resigns, the board appoints a replacement. And that replacement then can appoint a deputy, that's the way it would go. In terms of appointing a treasurer, there's no procedure whereby it says we have to post the, post the position, interview people, go through that process, the board just decides to appoint Chuck Walters tomorrow. It was upon resignation of the. If we, if the board, if the board decides in an open meeting, there's a discussion, and you say Chuck's qualified, I don't see any need to post this, on, the board has the authority to just.
You could do that, really.
There could be a motion to appoint him, and it could go forward.
Now, let's clarify when you do that, what happens? So we'll pick on Chuck for a minute, because he's here. So you can appoint Chuck, Chuck then can serve in that position until the next general election, if it's greater than 180 days. And if he wants to maintain that position, he has to then file to run for election. The filing for election, if you're running under a party affiliate, is April.
22nd.
22nd, 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon. Has to file for that position. All that means is he has to say, I want to run for that job, to keep it longer than what you've appointed. The appointment we would appoint, or whoever that is, we'll pick on Chuck again, would be up to the final determination of the general election in November, okay? So that's the position they have. The person that Chuck would appoint as his deputy only serves at his pleasure till that point. If he then runs and is elected, it's a, it's a normal campaign, then that person can continue working for you. But you're only serving in that appointment up to the point of the general election.
If the board accepts the resignation on May.
On the 8th, yes, that's all caveat and acceptance, when you make that appointment, yes. We have, again, 45 days to make that appointment, we don't want 45 days, but by law, if you don't, as a township appointing 45 days, the state comes in and tells you, you're going to run a special election to do that with. So it's a regular procedural process that we follow.
So we don't pay bills for months and months and months?
Yeah, we can't, we know that, but, but that's, that's what we have.
Or payroll.
Huh?
Or payroll.
Or payroll, that's probably as crucial as the bills when you have employees that need to.
That might be a good thing.
Eat once in a while. So it's important that we think of our employees and our people, yeah.
Okay, now that we're educated on the process, which we kind of knew somewhat, because we went through this some years ago. We're having a meeting on, on Tuesday, resignation is submitted for a date. I certainly am not inclined to try to keep somebody aboard who doesn't want to be on board, especially in light of a lot of the accusations, so if we, Tuesday we accept it, what happens is we can't deposit checks that come in, they'll sit.
We can still make deposits.
Ah, we can still make deposits.
Yes, we can, we can ask for assistance with, with the, the checks, the money to be deposited into the bank, but we will not have signatures on checks.
Okay, that's important, so any checks that come in can be deposited and posted and moved forward and that area?
Yes.
It's only the payable side and payable side is the issue. So it's Tuesday, we can't write any checks, so that's kind of a gun to our head. We got a 45-day window, but we're, yep, we kind of have a gun to our head.
We do. What's your, short intervals are not easy when you have those guns.
What, just so we kind of, we're in start of this, what's your plan, what thought have you given on Tuesday of?
Well, we have a couple things, one is if we have somebody that comes up and says on Tuesday, or before Tuesday does, I think I'd like to take that job, whether they want to take it and run for it, or they would like to take that job for the period of time that we appoint till the election, it could be either one, that's not our call, that's their call, then we could appoint somebody. So if, Karen's back, I'll pick on Karen, Chuck's, I don't want to do it. If Karen said, I'd be glad to do that for this many months, but I don't want to run for election, we could appoint Karen. She could appoint a deputy for that period, do the work, and at the end of the election time, say, bye-bye, I'm getting done. Or she could say, I'd like to run for it and I'll sign it for election, well, let me talk about election. Hardest, if you're going to run as a party candidate, that's this April 22nd date. If you're running as a nonpartisan candidate, it is July 22nd at 4:00 p.m.
Right, you register at the.
So if you have one or the other, you can do, so I'm just, you know, that's the procedure, that's, whatever position is, that's the same throughout the state, throughout any of these elected official functions.
But the fact of whether this person is interested in running again is, is either here nor there in terms of our decision. I assume the person we appoint has to live in Acme Township?
Yes.
Yes.
Could you appoint a person, could you appoint, if a person said, I live in Acme Township, I'm over 18, I'm registered, and I qualify, I'm interested in being the treasurer, but there's a lot to that job, but I'm going to appoint somebody, deputy does not have to live in the township?
No, they, no, I don't, they have to live in Grand Travis County, they do not have to live in the township.
Okay, so, so if you've got a, I would say a figurehead, a figurehead that allows us to then proceed with doing their duties, they could go out and hire a deputy who's hired at, at will, who's qualified, knows the deputies, excuse me, knows the treasurer's functions. So.
The treasurer would be paid at the treasurer's, so that figurehead, right?
Is paid at the treasurer's, paid grade as.
Doing the work.
Yes.
Not just figure, I mean, the treasurer is ultimately responsible on the person.
They have the end.
They're not just smiling and waving and meeting.
They're voting.
They're getting substantial advice from the deputy.
As far as conducting the day-to-day business of the, of the office of the treasurer, receiving checks, a deputy does that, does all the processes.
Now they do.
Now they do.
Well, they do a lot of them, there are some processes, I would say, that our deputy today doesn't do, but our treasurer.
But can do, I mean, I'm just saying.
Has the right to do.
Has the right to do.
That's right, statutory.
The deputy can sign to be the second signature?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So as you asked earlier, you know, if we have somebody that comes forward and says they'd like to do that, whether they want to run or don't want to run, we would want, that would be something we can consider.
Are you going to think of running ads in the paper?
That's where we're going to go next, to talk about.
No, I would not, between now and Tuesday, try to run an ad in the paper.
Right, we can't do any advertising until the.
Acceptance letter of the resignation, that's right.
It needs to be voted upon from the board, then we can advertise, but not until.
Well, just to get moving on this, since, again, we'll be able to run a gun to our head. In anticipation of it happening on Tuesday, I would recommend you be prepared, you have ads sitting there on your desk, it's where are you going to run it, and whatever, as soon as it's accepted, get the ad out there with a drop dead date, or they have to be received by a certain date, and then put the timetable, that we have another special meeting to then go through the resumes, make a decision.
Kind of like we did when we, when Kathy was appointed at that, same kind of a process.
Well, did you run the Record Eagle?
No.
No, we put it on our website at the time.
Well, to get back to the Record Eagle, when would you run it? I mean, if, just as, to say, okay, we had our April 8th meeting, the vote went through, as one scenario, that the vote goes through, and the letter of resignation is accepted, when would you run the ad, what days would you want it ran, would you want it ran the whole week?
Whatever you, I mean, I'm, no, I'm not giving you the detail, I'm just saying, have it.
Be prepared, you need to do it.
In anticipation of accepting the resignation, have the thing drawn up, ready to go immediately, because again.
Prayer and ad. Because then you have to give if the, the person does April 22nd, if you want to run on a party ticket, you got to get yourself in. You're looking at.
You have a very small window.
Tight.
Well, and my understanding from Jeff is that you can, I mean, you could say today that you're, that people want to submit a resume, you guys can accept resumes, and at the meeting on Tuesday, have people, people who are interested be present and speak and talk to the board, and sort of be interviewed by the board, and have their resumes, you know, that is, you can do that.
That's, that's right.
Okay, but we can't advertise, so we can't put it on a website. We can't put it on a website unless we accept it, so then.
But you're going to have word of mouth, people in this room here, anybody that says, hey, I'll go call my buddy to see if they want to run, they have the right to do that.
Quick question.
Yeah, Brian.
If we appoint, if you were to appoint somebody on Tuesday to fill this basis and allow us to write checks as a township, could we do an interim appointment where they were there for two or three weeks or four weeks, until maybe we found someone who's more qualified, is that something we could change at a later date?
Well, it's usually not appropriate, because once they're put in that position, what we've really done is said, you're now our elected person, you are that function, you have the rights under the statutory of that function. It's possible somebody could say, I only want to do it for that long, but they can then change their mind, we can't make them not change their mind or change their mind. So it's pretty, once you appoint, you ought to consider that's an appointment for the period of time. It's a good question, if some people have said, I may be willing to do it for this short period, you know, but then we still have to go face it again, yes?
Sir, we have been called on by some townships, including the East Bay Township with Glen Mile, in helping facilitate that process, and we do it at the staff level, so it's not nearly as expensive as at the audit level, while they're going through that process. So, you know, a firm or another type of entity might be an option for you as well.
Thank you. So, yeah, this, Gordy help with your question?
Well, yeah, I think run an ad in the paper, get it prepared, even, you can send it in beforehand and tell them to run it on Wednesday, and then, I guess you can cancel it. We can get out there quick, and if we're running on the ticker, that's what we did the last time. That's a bigger audience than people have, says going to our website and.
Than the Record Eagle almost, yes.
But any ad has to be specific that they reside in Acme Township, I, I think.
You have to say that, I think I'm talking about, right, if you want that position, you have to run for it.
Right, I think, draft something up.
Can't you use what we used for the clerk, put the treasurer's name in there?
I haven't seen that, so I'd have to.
You probably don't, I'll have to look for it, because we didn't put it on there, if you remember, that was done by the treasurer at the time.
Sure, but it's on a computer, I'm sure, or saved somewhere.
I won't comment this time where it's, I had time to actually look for it, could very well be.
So you'll have something prepared Tuesday to run the ticker and the Record Eagle, should we accept the resignation? That's a motion I'd like to make, that staff.
Can I vote on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think so.
We're just talking about the procedure we follow.
Okay.
Majority of the quorum would be okay.
Okay, so that motion's been made by Gordy.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
You're going to help do that, aren't you? We're going to do it together.
Second.
That's fine. Okay, any other question on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go at the same time. Okay. Any other question from the board on these procedures? I just want to make sure they were provided, they are very well written. We want everybody in the public and ourselves to know what they are. They're pretty standard in the state when they do this. This is not something we're doing different in any other township. If somebody has to fill in a foreign position, that's the way you go about it. I think it's probably been there under statute for many years, that one. So, what we want is people to know.
Can we, question, the resignation is submitted, I don't, is it state effective April eighth?
Right. Our letter does say that it's effective April eighth. Are you thinking of asking her to change?
No.
Okay.
Can, can the board accept it to change the date?
Yeah, that's all right.
No, I don't think you can at this point. I think you can, and I may attest Kate, I think you can say, "I will or won't accept it this time," and we need to, we need to get together and determine when we will then, without determining, "I will accept it two weeks or three."
Are we allowed to ask questions right now? I just have questions.
Let's answer this, and then we will let you, no doubt, no problem with that.
It's kind of been that same.
Okay, okay. So we, I don't think, I don't think it says, oh, yeah, we'll accept it, but only if you give this date. I think we would say, we will accept it at that meeting or won't accept it. If we're not accepting it, then we need to set a meeting to, you know, a special meeting to discuss it and what's our wish to be. Is that fair, Kate?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we could look into it and see if there's some, but as far as statute is concerned, you know, it's effective when you accept it, and you, the date you accept it is the date that it's effective, day searched one.
There have been townships, I've, we've done some checking, that have actually negotiated dates under different circumstances, and the person said, "Well, I, yeah, I guess I could put off not being there for a month or two for some reason." That's, that's happened. That's one of the things that happened.
It was just a question.
Okay. Yes?
I still have a question, maybe two.
That's fine.
Let's say that that day comes on the eighth that you accept her resignation, and in that case, after you've accepted her resignation, if there's someone on the board that wanted to look at that job from the board going to the treasury, is that acceptable? Number two...
From the public or from?
From the board.
Could be from either, is all I'm saying. Yeah, it's not one or the other.
And number two, is there a waiting process so that interviews are taking, are taken from your, your advertisement out there in the Record Eagle, like thirty days? I mean, how soon can a treasurer effectively be put in place?
Go ahead, Kate. If you want to answer that, I can, but I'll let you start. You probably know better than I do.
They, I mean, they kind of, they could appoint someone effective Tuesday on Tuesday. There's no necessary waiting period. You know, there's sort of a good practice of what townships do to make sure that it's fair and that they're considering everyone who's interested in it being fair. But, you know, in terms of what they have authority to do, they could hire someone.
That did.
Not hire.
Point somebody that day.
Okay. And your first question, remind me what your first question was.
Is it allowable to take someone from the board and pick them?
Sure, that that person would resign their trustee position and then be treasurer, and then the trustee position would be open.
Or whatever position the person is in.
I assume replacing, we can head ahead on this, but assume if a, someone on the board took, applied for a different position, you then go through the same scenario of replacing them, forty-five days, yada, yada, just going forward.
Same procedure, just different function you're replacing.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on this from the board at this point? I don't, I don't believe so, but I'll make sure that that's what the board believes.
I just want to be sure that, should bring up on my notes, depending on how things go on April eighth, just to have the discussion, that there, there will be, the treasurer's report and reconciling won't be, that's something that won't be happening.
Just like checks won't be signed.
Right, exactly. I guess that should be...
Some normal functions that take the authorities to do can't be done.
Can the deputy be here to get those checks signed, or can the checks be signed prior to the eighth, so then once we approve them, then they're distributed? Is that legal to do, that they can sign those checks, and then if we don't approve, you pull out those checks?
The predate, I don't know if that...
Not predating, no, not predating. So the date of the check would be the eighth, and you're signing it on the seventh.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, at that point, your, the treasurer's authority ended on that date, so it shouldn't be a check.
But it's not until we accept.
But the check isn't, right, up until, I mean, for the day of the meeting, sure, but she can't sign checks for two days after the meeting.
Okay, then this is my question. Okay, I can have checks printed out and ready to be signed, but if they're not board approved, can she sign them? I mean, I wouldn't sign them. They would be, there would only be one signature on them, therefore they would wait for board's approval to get the final signature. I don't know if that's...
If you have the board approve them before you accept the resignation and she signs them between, I mean, then...
Yeah, I don't get deeper into this. Let me ask you this question. Let's say we go thirty days from the checks you normally would run on the eighth. Let's go thirty days. What check, what transactions are at risk? Electricity, heat, I mean...
You might get penalties.
Payrolls.
I, I, I don't think, I don't think it would be highly detrimental to let anything go for thirty days. I mean, I guess our biggest concern would be our, you know, receptionist and our, our...
Our employees.
Who don't get a paycheck, because you've got a bi-weekly system instead of a monthly system going on with that. Bills aren't monthly.
So the payroll's the big, the big...
Probably the biggest of the days.
Can I go with escrow?
Huh?
Can we do an escrow thing on that or some sort of arrangement?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Unless I missed the answer to this earlier, could not the action of the board on the eighth be tabled to the next meeting, and the deputy treasurer still sign documents in the interim until such time as the board, and this gives you an opportunity of some time to find a replacement for the treasurer at the May meeting, then make a decision on the new treasurer, and then in the interim, the deputy treasurer is signing documents so nothing gets plugged up?
If we don't accept a resignation, then things stay as they are, and that could be done, yes.
It's not a question of not accepting it. It's not a question of tabling it, taking no action, tabling it or making...
Well, that's not accepting it when we don't take any action at that time.
Well, I wonder if there might be a fine line between not accepting it versus tabling action on it for thirty days.
I would buy kind of that, but we're going to say, "Let's table this right now. Functions are as they were."
And therefore you don't have...
I have another period I can at least put something in.
Block differing between the clerk and the treasurer.
But I will eventually have that period if I don't have something.
I know the advertise rule.
What's that?
The, the rule that you can't advertise until after. I'm not familiar with that rule.
We've been given that guidance because, well, the job's not, not vacant, so you're a can't advertise a job, job not vacant yet.
They kind of take the jumpy ones.
MTA.
MTA.
That was their recommendation.
That's been their position on this all day.
I don't think there's probably a clear law. It's probably just, that's practice.
So that's why we asked earlier, but do you accept it, don't you?
But you could, even if you're not advertising, except to have people come to a meeting prepared to be interviewed by the board.
If you have it prepared on Tuesday evening, it's accepted at sun, you can have, you can run the ad, notify them on Wednesday, it'll be in the paper Thursday, and so, you know, just have it, have it ready to go, have your plan hit the fire, just so we can move quickly. I hear what you're saying, I just, this has been messy, I think everybody would agree, and keeping this thing open is just like what now hell's going on.
I only said it from the standpoint of allowing payrolls and checks and things and utility bills and those things still to flow without penalty, you know, you're still going to move forward in May and accepting the position, resignation of someone who doesn't want to be here, understood, but it gives the board flexibility in the interim to keep things moving.
What, the payroll, when does payroll run for Tom and Nancy?
It's bi-weekly this Wednesday, this, this last Wednesday was payroll.
When's the next payroll due?
So there isn't a payroll next Wednesday.
Okay, so we have a couple of weeks, so it's not, okay. And that's the big one.
To me it is.
Yeah, okay, so I, I think, well, we just have to move quickly. I mean, we're going to put these out there, just move quickly now. Keeps the sun, keeps pressure on us to move, so.
Okay, anything else? Hearing nothing at this point from the board. Open again for public comment, Ian. Anybody? Yes?
I would just like to thank this board for allowing us to participate in your discussion today. This is highly unusual, and due to the nature of, I mean, this whole thing is highly unusual, but again, thank you very much for allowing us all the time to participate. Appreciate that.
We appreciate all the input. It's always helpful to have multiple views of what you can do and...
Is it too late for a discussion on something?
We'll come back to board.
Okay.
Anybody else? Tom?
Should the former treasurer produce something that the board has alleged to have done wrong, or the township has alleged to have done wrong, has the board determined what the mechanism for sharing that with the township and the public? What, how will that take place? Assuming you receive a three-page letter from someone said, "The filing and things happen."
All public information.
So I mean, the board will produce that?
Everything we have, information, unless we're under laws here sometime.
Well, I think there would be timing on that, that if it came after the meeting on the eighth, I think we would not want to have to wait a full month to get the details on it.
Well, I'm sure if we had a meeting on the eighth and something was received, we would be having a special meeting, just like we are today. It's a very, this is why we did this today. We knew it was not the best. We knew it was when people had been on vacation. We were concerned that we have enough people. Thank goodness Amy was coming back yesterday versus a lot of people coming back from vacation today, or we couldn't even have done it. But we really do want to have people understanding what's going on, what's happening. Jean, do you want to make a comment?
Oh, I did, just, just a five. To Gordy's point about, you know, putting in an ad, depending on how the meeting goes on the eighth, let's say hypothetically that a board member says, "Gosh, I'd like to do this," okay. Could that be determined at that meeting? And I'm sorry, I came in it.
Yes.
If that's the case, I'd really be careful about having an ad all prepared and ready to roll that also advertises for a treasurer again.
I think we can have the type ready. We have to be prepared to act, whatever happens.
But maybe if we advertise for a trustee, I don't know how that works, but I, you know, personally, my comfort level is, is with people I already know who, who have served us, I don't know, if that, if that happens.
Everybody has different thoughts on that.
Sure, sure, just my, my two cents.
Anything else from the audience on the comment? Otherwise, I'll bring it back to board. Gordy, you had something? Oh, Paul, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to know when this was posted on the internet. First time I knew about this meeting was in a Record Eagle today.
It was posted on the internet on Tuesday, I believe it was.
Tuesday of when?
This week.
This week?
Oh, yeah.
How, 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 how?
Go ahead.
How much are you supposed to post stuff ahead?
Eighteen hours. We tried to get it way before eighteen hours. We don't like to be eighteen hour, hey, we might be here tomorrow, kind of thing, no. So it was posted well before eighteen hours. Special meetings, that's pretty much the statute on special meetings.
It raises the question of whether it would be an official act, a function, or a private list, whether there could be a mail list to maybe send a notification out to people that are having a special meeting, because I know it takes a lot of people. I finally have to check the website by chance and so on.
It's unfortunate that that, yeah. We, we used to have a mail list that wasn't very big, so it didn't get to a lot of residents, so you do that and not get there, but we try to follow a normal posting process. It's on the board, on our website. Our new website gives us a lot more flexibility, be able to get in there, get it done and attached. Like the meeting for next week was also posted on Wednesday this week.
There may be a way to subscribe, since that is a Google named pain calendar. You may be able to subscribe to that calendar, and when changes are made to the calendar, you may get a notification.
There, a lot of things have that. I don't know in that case, but there are things you can subscribe to. If something comes out about certain thing, you'll get an email if you have it, yes.
But that would be on your side.
Well, it would be a Google thing because it's a Google calendar.
I know, but wouldn't that be on my account?
Don't ask this.
I, I, well, and I just want you to understand that you would have to subscribe on your email.
Hey, I don't do Google.
A lot of people don't, so you're not by yourself, but, yes. Okay, anything else?
I'm not ashamed of that.
No.
There was a question about this, the packet for this coming month. There is a treasurer's report, right?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
So we're good?
Yes, because that, that's reporting February.
Right, we're always reporting.
Yes.
So we reconciled through February, so the March board meeting is, we're getting everything we normally get, balance sheet, payables.
Yes.
The holds.
And your packets are in, for those who are here today, are in your blackmail boxes?
I guess the other thing is, I hate to bring this up, but I think you mentioned at the beginning about Dennis. There's this whole thing that we discussed our future date on, who we need an accountant, what accounts, and this whole, this whole thing. Excuse me. My guess, the question is, in light of what's transpired in the last month, and I realize the last vote was, you know, he's, he's out of here for all reasons, because the conflict, prime member of the treasurer, I raise the question, you're on vacation. Is there any open switches that you need covered with him at this point?
Dennis has, is, is an open door. He has told me that if I have any questions on any of the work that he has previously done, or if I need help understanding anything, or if, basically, if there's any questions on anything, that he is willing to talk to us, not, there isn't a closed door there.
Okay, but in that building, what's for that?
Are there open things that Dennis and we're working on? Sure, there were, there were a few things, but nothing real high priority. It was just, just doing a lot of cleanup, doing a lot of questioning and investigating, and that, those were the types of things that we were working on, you know, alongside of other things. And so they're just, they're on the burner now until we can go forward and...
Well, I would hate, I would hate to hear that you have some issue that you now have, you don't have a treasurer to talk to, you don't have an accountant to talk to, and something's gone awry. So if it, if that is the case, and you can't, you need...
We need to bring it up and discuss it.
Bring it up. I don't want to hear that not reconciling the books, reconciling the bank statement, so.
Right, but as a clerk, I can't do that individually because segregation of...
Do we have somebody to do it with?
Right.
Yes. Okay, anything else in the board? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go at the same time. Thank you.